The regular pack I needed to get to order. Norm, would you move it to the left?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You want to call your roll?
Yeah, you'll need to speak up a little bit.
Oh, sorry.
Today's roll call, Lawrence.
Here.
Paquette.
Here.
Jaffa.
Here.
Smith called in, excused.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
And Chair Hamdahl also called in, but you have a quorum.
Okay, wonderful. Next on the agenda is citizen comments on any subject except those scheduled for public hearing, and we don't have any public hearings today. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak?
No one is signed in.
All right.
You can announce the audience.
Does anybody want to speak that isn't signed in? Okay, you will not. So approval of the agenda and the consent agenda, I need a motion and a second.
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion.
I'll make a second, I'd like to speak to the agenda.
Okay, go ahead.
I would like to add a discussion item about the heat pump project. Can I do it?
It has to be noted if we're going to have a specific discussion about something.
Okay, I'll do it in comments soon.
Okay. Okay, any other changes to the agenda? Voting on the agenda and consent agenda?
Voting on today's agenda and consent agenda, Lawrence.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Paquette.
Yes.
Jaffa.
Yes.
Your agenda and consent agenda are approved, and what you approved on consent are the January 5th, 2022 regular meeting minutes.
Thank you. Next up is special orders, presentations, and reports. We don't have any proclamations or awards. The next thing would be the administration report.
Mine's harder. I do not have anything to add though. I do not have anything to add though.
Okay. Norm, did you have anything?
I would come down and hard message you.
Okay. All right, so moving on. Under other reports and announcements, the first up would be the Alaska Railroad report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board, and Administration and Public. You'll find on page three of the packet my written report. I won't highlight everything written, but I will say I just checked the current cruise ship schedule that was republished on Monday, and we're holding steady with the vessels planned. We lost a couple ships in April, but honestly, historically, we lose some of those early ships anyways that are just transitioning into the market. And then I might just note, I don't have it in my report, but we're expecting two foreign vessels this spring. I don't want to give out too many details on the time of arrival, but why that's helpful is our longshore in the community will be working those vessels, so it's great work for that, those well-paid jobs. And then we're planning on getting one, if not both, of those SBS barges as the turning-in-arm remains iced in. So you'll be seeing lots of work, actually lots of train, because all that cargo will be moving by train. So what that does is that also puts Alaska Railroad crews in town that are either staying in hotels, eating out, you know, even though that's outside labor, there is money coming into the community based on that. So that's all I have to report about.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
First question is, you did make note that there's been a couple cancellations in April. Have you received any notice of any in May yet?
Not at all.
Okay. Now, I saw that you needed legislative approval for the issuance of the bonds.
Mm-hmm.
If that goes through in a timely manner, when does construction begin?
Oh, yeah, so that is specific to our cruise dock project. And just to clarify and for the public, the railroad will issue their own bonds. So we will fully guarantee and pay those bonds, but there is a clause that the state, House, and Senate need to approve us going out to bond, so it won't be state bonding, it'll be railroad bonding. If that moves forward, you know, I'm actively reviewing plans, making comments. I, you know, I think it would be aggressive to say construction's starting at the end of this year, 2022, but, you know, that's one of the, one of the points that they're looking at. But we would be definitely looking at 2023 for start of some construction.
I do have one more. So if you did start the construction, obviously the new, the existing dock will no longer be available for crews. Were you intending just to use the freight dock at that time?
Well, current plans, and I'm not on the engineering team, but the work, the work plan right now is that dock was built with a number of seams. One seam runs east-west and one seam runs, seam runs north-south. So the dock's structural integrity will remain as we work one side and then the other side. So we plan on having that dock being available for at least one cruise ship regardless of construction. And then the freight dock would be for a second cruise ship, which this summer, we even have a three cruise ship day. So we'll have two ships at the cruise ship dock this summer and one at the freight dock. So we're planning on that being the working level. Again, you know, I'm hearing information coming through procurement and engineering, but that's my understanding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is the chamber report.
Hi. I'll be brief, you have the thing that I wrote, the report in your packet, but some things I want to highlight. The first is that the Stuart Silver Salmon Derby dates have been finalized to be the usual week, which will be August 13th to 21st. And the logo design contest is now open, so if you know any artists or if you yourself are an artist, we are accepting designs for the 2022 Stuart Silver Salmon Derby logo. The Mount Marathon race is also moving forward with a normal schedule this year to be run on July 4th, 2022. So start training now for that. And we have officially opened up our vendor applications for the Fourth of July Festival this year, which will take place Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. So we're doing a longer window this year just because a lot of other festivals have also opened up their registration. So we decided, why not open up ours too, just to make sure people know that we'll be celebrating Fourth of July again in Stuart, and most people want to come to us before others, so we want to give them the chance to sign up, which is very flattering. And then the big thing coming up this month is our February Valentine's Day weekend. We have a lot of cool events going on, including speed dating, love letter writing. There is a makers market that we've organized or helped organize of local vendors and makers at the Temple Studios for you to pick up some last-minute gifts. And it should be a really great weekend, we hope to see everybody out there. So that'll be not this coming weekend, but the weekend after. So if you're looking for some stuff to do around town, there should be plenty. We're also planning an in-person chamber after five event on February 24th at Stony Creek Brew House if anybody wants to come out and hang out. And we're kind of trying to do a lot of in-and-out, stay as long as you want instead of sit around just to keep the contact minimal as we still navigate through the COVID-19 pandemic, but would love to see people come in, so any questions?
I do, I think this graph that you provided, it's very, very small print, let's first look at it. Have you and Nicole talked about, she also has a graph.
Yeah, I just saw Nicole's graph.
How much do these overlap?
So the graph that I provided in there is from a company called Air DNA. I do apologize for the small print, it's a lot of information. But the exciting part about that is seeing how short-term rentals and occupancy rates change over time. So as we're getting more and more, a more popular, as we're becoming a more popular destination, our occupancy rate is near 99%, especially in July. We've also anecdotally had a lot of calls from people at the Chamber of Commerce looking for rentals in July, and it's nearly impossible to come by already. So that graph there shows how over time, those two rates of the number of, the number of rentals available on Airbnb or VRBO, so that's only on those booking sites and the occupancy rate based off of those, so.
Is that primarily what you're looking at?
Mm-hmm, yep. So just some useful information, especially for us as people call and ask, how far out should I be booking? The answer is today, if you're coming in July, you should have booked last month, so, yeah. But I will talk to Nicole about that, actually, I think, I don't think I've been able to, I haven't shown you that. But I think she also probably knows. Yep.
I'm curious, how did participation of the polar bear jump-off compare to previous years?
So participation was on par. We, in comparison to last year, it blew it out of the water, so I'm loving it, but no, yeah. It was a regular polar bear plunge weekend by all accounts, not bigger or smaller than usual. Looking at some preliminary data of how many people we had in town that weekend, with some of the data companies that we work with, it seems to have been the same as 2019, which is good. We felt at the chamber that we had a little bit more participation in general events around town, and the events of the polar jump weekend did put on seem to be more engaging than the past few years. I know that the Luminary was really, really lovely.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, moving on. Harvard Master Report.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So yeah, my report, but I just wanted to add a couple items. So for global diving and salvage, we actually blasted vessels in the water yesterday, so they should hopefully get starting on the welding the handles and the concrete plugs. Also, I don't know if you remember during COVID, we got, received some money from the state, $480,000 or something like that. Anyway, we bought three 80/80 restrooms, it's going to be at the cruise ship dock for them to use their extra restroom, because their restroom, they only have a couple, right? So they're going to be setting those up, and then I'm pretty sure she'll take pictures and have the, for you guys. But just let them know they did arrive, and a little bit of damage, not too bad, but those are going to be set up in the railroad dock to help with the cruise ship season. And that was from the state grant we received. So during your work session on February 16th, I hope you and Juno will be pushing for Harvard funding and stuff to come now with this infrastructure money and also the facility grant program and other Harvard issues throughout the state. And actually, I just received an email, the Coast Guard's actually going to be here next week to do, not Coast Guard, the appraisal for the Coast Guard is going to be here to do their appraisal, even though we city paid for appraisal for that lot, now they have to do appraisal. They can see ours, we can't see theirs, it's kind of weird, but that's pretty much it, do you take any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Norm? No, all right, thank you so much. Moving on to presentation. Discussion of local business owner on the hiring difficulties of their business. In this case, it will be Nicole Lawrence for us today.
Great, thank you, thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you guys about the way that employment is affected by housing here in Stuart. And my name is Nicole Lawrence, I'm the broker and owner at Stuart Properties and have started that business in 2014, but we've been doing property management since 2011. So I'll get into a lot of the statistics and data points. I do want to apologize that on these slides I've given you, there's a lot of words. I don't normally put so much words on my slides, but I did in this because these may be presented to other people and I won't be there to give context to them, so I wanted the slides to be able to speak for themselves. So not normally so wordy on the slides, but today you're going to see a lot. So to get started, if you want to start with the general information on rentals, just some things that you guys probably already know, but if not, this is maybe some good information for you.
Can we turn the lights off?
You have a hard copy.
What?
You have a hard copy.
I won't say that, it's great.
So most people moving to Stuart, they actually do prefer to rent before buying. That may not be something that you guys know, but a lot of people come into our office and they speak with Allison, our property manager, and then they speak with one of our sales associates, and they really want to know the area and the job before they commit to purchasing a house here. Sometimes they also have a house elsewhere that they're trying to sell before they move here. So most people do prefer to rent before they buy here. People looking for jobs do tend to plan ahead. I think that Tara kind of touched on this a little bit in her presentation, but we don't know which rentals are going to be opening up at any given time until 30 days before they do. Because renters who have leases, long-term leases, they don't have to decide whether they're renewing or not until 30 days before. So when we have someone walk in our office like we did a month ago to discuss this about housing, to commit to work for the hospital in that case, we cannot promise them that six months from now there's going to be a place for them, they would be coming here in June. So that's part of the issue with people being able to plan ahead, is that we can't tell you that something's going to be available six months from now. Something that would really help out with that, or that does help out with that, is for instance, the Park Service and other entities, they have this transitional housing, they have some housing. You can't stay there for a long time, but it can be a place for you to end up here in Stuart. Once you're in Stuart, you're trying to find something more long-term. And as most of us probably know, once you're in Stuart, it's a lot easier to find a place. You start to know people through your work, you make connections, and people are going to try to help you get into something. So transitional housing, employee-owned or just long-term lease through employers is really helpful. Once people find a good rental, they often stay in that unit for a long time, and we'll get some statistics on that based on Stuart Properties' data, but there's not a lot of turnover with good rentals located in good locations. So while we manage a lot of rentals, not that many actually open up. So this does result in a pretty low vacancy rate and little long-term rental availability. And a major barrier for renters in Stuart, just so we're all on the same page, is that a lot of people do have pets in Alaska, and people moving up to Alaska have pets. And so that is a barrier for rentals and for housing for people who are looking for jobs. If they call us and say they have five dogs, it's going to be a lot harder to find a landlord who will allow that. It's not us as a property management company that's making that decision. In fact, we advocate very highly to landlords to allow people with pets because it really comes down to responsible pet ownership is what we believe. Sometimes people will pay a higher deposit, so we work very hard with landlords to try to educate them on the fact that we've had very little to no significant pet damage at any of our rentals that could have been covered by a security deposit. So we definitely advocate for people to open up that opportunity. So if we flip to the next slide, we're talking about length of rentals in Stuart, and this is based off of Stuart Properties managed rentals. So we manage 113 to 120 long-term rentals at a time. Most of those are year-round. So 84% of the rentals that we manage are year-round rentals. There aren't very many people that hire us to fill summer-only rentals. You'll see right there, it's three of our rentals are summer-only rentals. So if you refer people to Stuart Properties to help people find places in the summer, we probably cannot help them. It is just very hard to find seasonal housing. But I'm not focusing much of this talk on seasonal housing, it's really for long-term housing. So the majority of our rentals are year-round. And then we also assist other people with finding renters for the year-round housing, even if we don't manage them full-time. So there, I would say that this is probably pretty representative of Stuart as a whole. The majority of our rentals are year-round. The next slide shows us rental availability, so this comes from our Stuart Properties data as well. We manage 113 units, and when I'm talking about a unit, a 16plex would be 16 units. There's 16 doors there. A single-family home account is one unit. So based off of this, you can see that 70% or a little bit more than that of our leases get renewed on an annual basis. So if we're managing 113 properties, that means that only about 33 properties are going to open up on an annual basis. That's not a lot, and that's because people are staying in their rentals. So really bottom line, and again Tara mentioned this too, rentals are challenging a lot more because of availability than because of crisis. And if we go to the next slide, so there's a lot of information here, but I'll try to just pick out the more important stuff, and you guys can spend some time looking through it if you like. Based on all of our rentals, 70% of our rentals are apartments, or they have shared walls, and only 30% are houses. That may not be reflective of Stuart as a whole, and that's because if you think about who's hiring a property management company, if you own a 16plex, you're much more likely to hire us. If you own a single-family home and you're going to rent it on your own, you might just do that on your own. So we do manage 70% of our rentals as apartments. And if you go ahead and you look at the sizes, I broke it down, went through all of our rentals and broke down the average monthly rate, the sizes, and how many of them we manage. And you'll see we manage about 30% one-bedroom homes and one-bedroom apartments. Combined, 30% on two-bedroom homes and apartments, and a combined 30-some-odd percent on three bedrooms. We don't have a lot of four-plus-bedroom houses, but we honestly, we don't get that many families, large families moving here looking for housing. We do often need three bedrooms. And the three-bedroom is a little bit skewed because if you look under the apartments, it says 30% of our apartments are three-bedroom, but we actually manage a huge 16plex and they're all three-bedroom apartments, so that kind of skews the numbers a little bit. I will say that when talking to our property manager Allison, the majority of people calling for rentals are single-person households or two-person households. We do get families, but when I talk about people wanting to rent before they buy, that is typically the one-to-two-person households. A lot of families, and we'll see a slide about this later, they, they understand they need a bigger place, they typically have pets, they know renting's going to be harder, they may also have already owned a home elsewhere. So when they move to Stuart, those larger families are the ones that tend to transition straight into homeownership rather than rentals. I think a really important point that I don't think is very common knowledge is that rental prices have not changed much since I started. So I started in 2011, and I started with a sheet of paper just like this showing me how much I was going to rent out each place for based on what I understood the market to be, and that really hasn't changed. It's changed maybe 1% a year, 10% over 10 years. It has not stayed at the same rate of inflation that health prices have. But rental prices are going to change in the next few years, and we'll talk about that in a minute. So with the next one right here, we're talking about what can a renter afford? I think that's really important for employers to understand. So you already have on the previous slide how much average rentals cost, which I think hopefully is helpful to employers. And those are all averages, obviously every rental is different, right? So your recommended guideline is to spend 30% of your monthly income on housing, rent or your mortgage and utility payment. So for a two-bedroom apartment at $1,150 a month, utilities would be included because that's an apartment, you'd have to make about $46,000 a year to stay within that guideline. For a three-bedroom house at $1,500 a month plus the average utilities of $350, you need to be making $74,000 a year. So hopefully that helps people understand as far as renters, what they can afford and what they need to be making to stay within those guidelines. Something that we're probably going to see is rents increasing pretty significantly over the next three years. And there's a lot of writing right there that you're welcome to read through, but I can explain it pretty simply. If you bought a home in 2015 and your mortgage payments are $1,300, when you go to move, if you want to keep your house as a rental because you don't have enough equity to sell it yet, you're going to rent that house out for your mortgage payments. You're not making a lot of money, but you're going to rent it out for at least $1,300 a month, right? What's happened over the past two years is that houses are selling for such a higher rate that that same house that was bought in 2015, now that mortgage payment on that is $1,600 a month. So in the next, I'd say, two to three years, because Stuart is very transitional, as these homeowners who don't have enough equity in their home within two to three years of owning it move on to a new job elsewhere, they're going to choose to rent out their house, and they're going to need to cover their mortgage, and their mortgage is higher than it was five years ago. Does that make sense? So, so I think that is something that we haven't seen, is rental rates increasing, but I think that is pretty predictable that that's going to happen because our house prices have increased pretty dramatically over the past few years. And, you know, this could result in employers needing to pay higher wages, or maybe it won't, who knows what it results in, but it does make it harder for a tenant to purchase a house if the rental rates are increasing and they're ending up spending more of their monthly income on housing instead of being able to save, then they can't save up for a down payment and closing costs. So it really limits the amount of buyers we have here, and when people can't buy homes, I feel like they're a lot more likely to take jobs elsewhere and move on. In the next slide, we're going to transition into the sales side of things. So what can a buyer afford if we stick with that same guideline of spending 30% of your monthly income on housing? I'm going to use an example here of a house that costs $305,000, because that's about the median home price in 2021. So with 5% down, which is really standard, and 3.5% interest rate, which we're looking at right now on a 30-year loan, your monthly payments with PMI, insurance, and taxes is going to be $1,756 a month. Your utilities, this is just an average, some utilities on homes are higher than that. Your total housing cost per month is going to be about $2,100. Utilizing that 30% of your monthly income, you'd need to make $84,000 a year as a household. So hopefully that illuminates that for you guys. So you, you know, housing is expensive and salaries to afford the housing here, not everybody's coming in and making $84,000 a year to afford the median-priced home in Stuart. The other thing that's going to affect this is that interest rates, if they rise, which we are predicting that interest rates are going to rise over the next few years, when the interest rates go up, so do your mortgage payments. And when your mortgage payments go up, we're in the situation where now you potentially need to make more in order to only be spending 30% of your income on housing. So this slide here, we're going to get into a few of the graphs, and I'm a numbers person, so I really love my numbers, but I'll do my best to explain it, and if it doesn't make sense, please feel free to ask me. So the horizontal axis there has the years, over the past 10 years. The vertical axis is price. The blue line is the average sales price of homes, right, which you get by adding up all the homes that have sold and dividing by the amount of homes that have sold that year. And then you have your median sales price, which is calculated a little bit differently, which is why they're different, the median takes away from the top and bottom until you get right to the middle. So looking at the median sales price, you can see that for 2021, it was $306,000, and that's the first year in history that that number has broken $300,000. From 2014 to 2020, for about a seven-year period, it stayed right around the mid-200s. I don't think any of us could have predicted what would have happened post-COVID with home sales prices. Part of that is a result of the fact, I'd say a majority of that, across the nation, is a result of the fact that there were less homes placed on the market during COVID. People were very concerned about home values tanking, they didn't want to list their home during COVID, they didn't want people walking through their homes, people weren't sure what they were doing with their jobs. There are a lot of reasons that homes weren't listed for sale in 2020. And with this depletion of inventory, we still have the same demand. People are still moving here for jobs, people with families still need a larger home or whatever it was, but there were just less homes. So the pool of buyers grew and grew and grew, and then the minute a home came on the market, there are a ton of offers, everybody is bidding against each other to try to get a home, and that really pushed up sales prices, it's just supply and demand, it always comes down to supply and demand. So the next slide, residential sales prices in Stuart. So this is based off of the homes that sold in 2019 throughout Stuart and in 2021. So to break it down a little bit, the blue and the red, those are homes under $200,000. It's pretty much the same from year to year. Homes under $200,000, just so we're all on the same page, those are pretty much not going to be financeable homes in Stuart. They're going to be fixer-uppers, dry cabins, if it's under $200,000, it's probably not bank-financialable. The gold section there, that is the $200,000 to $300,000 range, which was the majority of our sales in the past, but obviously changed and has been changing. And then the green and the purple, that's $300,000 and above. It used to account for about 30%, and now it's 50% or more. So I mean, really, the home prices have been changing. I think it's really interesting that in a 10-year period from 2009 to 2019, only 17 homes sold for over $400,000. But in the past two years, 25 houses sold for over $400,000. So when you talk about coming to Stuart and purchasing a home, like the house prices are high, it depends on where you're coming from, of course, but it's changing, it's changing a lot, so. This next slide right here is the rate of appreciation. And don't get too stuck on those bar graphs, it can be explained pretty simply, but the bottom horizontal axis is year to year, so the difference between 2012 and '13, et cetera. And then the vertical axis is the percent of change. So that would be averaging out to be about 5% a year from 2012 to 2020 on average. How much the value of a home changed with little to no improvements. In the past year, home prices increased 24.5%. So that means in 2020, I could have sold a home for $100,000. And 2021, that same house, if I'm a seller, is now selling for $125,000 with me doing nothing to it. And obviously, we're not talking about $100,000 homes, we're talking about $300,000. thousand dollar homes. We're talking about three hundred thousand dollar homes. So that's going from three hundred thousand dollars to three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars in one year with you doing nothing to your house. So I don't, I think this is what scares people into thinking that there's going to be a bursting bubble on home prices. But when I look at this, that's not what I see. Obviously, I don't have a crystal ball. But I believe that our average rate of appreciation of five percent a year, that's going to be what's normal again. We can't sustain twenty four and a half percent appreciation year after year. I mean, nobody would be able to afford to live here anymore or move here. So I don't think the values of home is going to decrease, but I do think that the rate of growth of appreciation is going to go back down to pre-COVID numbers. This graph here has a few data points. So if you just start out looking at the red line, I think that's something really great for all of us to know is that that's the number of homes sold in that year. So if you look from 2013 to 2021, that number is pretty flat lined for the most part. Forty four, fifty two is a high, but for the most part, we're selling forty ish homes in a year. Those are all the residential properties. That includes fixer uppers and homes over a million dollars. That's, that's everything right there, except for commercial properties and land. And then if you look at the blue line, that's your days on market. So days on market are the number of days a house sits on the market before an offer is accepted. And the forty four turned sideways, I think, when it got pushed to PowerPoint, which is funny. But so on average, that's saying that homes in 2021 were on the market for forty four days. But that is not how it feels as a real estate agent, and it's not the real truth. That forty four days encompasses all the fixer uppers that nobody can afford to purchase, that nobody really wants to purchase, unless they're looking for that specifically. It also includes homes over six hundred thousand, which are typically harder to sell in Seward. If you look at the homes in 2021 that were priced between two hundred and five hundred thousand, five days is how long they stayed on the market. So I dug deeper into that number because that isn't actually what we were seeing. So the majority of homes were on the market for five days. And that is because a lot of times, we even choose to try to leave them on the market longer. They could be off the market in less than twenty four hours if we allowed that. But as real estate professionals throughout Seward, I will say, speak for all of us, that it is not necessarily in the best interest of a seller or a buyer to allow houses to go off the market in twenty four hours. It gives a lot less people a chance to, to take a look and, and try to get a house. So five days. The next slide here, types of buyers. This is something I hear a lot of conjecture about, so I wanted to dig into the numbers myself. So I pulled up every single home that has sold over the past two years, 2019, 2020, actually three years, 2021. And of those homes, seventy five percent, so the red and the yellow and the upper left pie chart, seventy five percent of those buyers were people who already lived in Seward. The majority of them already lived in Seward. And then the gold area is those who moved to Seward and immediately went into purchasing a home and not into renting. So seventy five percent of the people purchasing in Seward are people who are here to live here. Twenty five percent of those people are non-primary residence purchasers. So I dug deeper on that one. And forty two percent in that blue part of the pie chart are people who live in Alaska, not Seward people, but people who live in Alaska who are looking for a second home or an investment property. So a lot of Alaskans that want a place in Seward. The red section is out of state people, which is just twenty six percent. So not quite as many, but there are people from out of state who want a second home more than investment property, I would say. They're really looking for a cabin or, or something to utilize in the summer here. And then the gold, those are local Seward people investing in our market. They know we have a great market, so they're looking at different rental options. I do want to make a point that a lot of the second home purchasers, they're buying houses that are fixer uppers that Seward people would not purchase, could not purchase because they're cash only, and they, they don't have running water. They don't have a lot of things that people really need to, to live. So they're buying those and they're fixing them up too. Not only are they buying these fixer uppers and taking homes off the market that regular Seward people aren't looking for, but they're also fixing them up and creating a situation when they sell three years down the road, they are financeable. So they're actually doing a lot of good in a lot of situations for Seward. Also, out of state buyers, what I've found is that they tend to really respect city zoning rules, and this applies to anchorage people too. If I list a house downtown and it's zoned urban residential and it could do nightly rentals, it's probably going to get a lot of anchorage buyer interest and offers. But if it is not zoned correctly, none of those agents will make offers for their clients. So I will just say that the out of state anchorage people do really respect the city zoning rules as far as I've found. And of the properties sold over these past few years, only three did I identify as being purchased with the primary intent of changing, changing from primary residence to nightly rentals. So I think there's a little bit of a misconception that people are coming in and buying all these houses as nightly rentals. I mean, looking at the actual facts, that's really just not the case. It's mostly people that are moving here and live here that want to purchase. The demographics of the buyers, so this is based off of Seward Properties data. Obviously, I don't have access to every single person's set of buyers, but we do represent sixty percent of the residential sales in Seward. So I feel like we have a pretty good basis to draw from. So the gold section are the fifty and older. The red section are thirty five to fifty year olds and the blue section is thirty five and under. In 2016, you can see that thirty five and under accounted for just twenty percent of the people who purchased, but that has increased to forty three percent. So buyers under thirty fives where we're seeing the most amount of growth. It's increased one hundred and thirteen percent in just the past five years. The buyers my age, thirty five to fifties remain pretty steady in the thirty percent range. And the buyers fifty and older, they've decreased by about fifty percent. And a lot of them that are buying are buying investment properties, rental properties and second homes. And this does go right in line with the demographics of the US population. So the blue and the yellow here, they account for Gen Z and millennials, people that would now be about forty and under. And that is the majority of buyers. So it just aligns with what we're seeing throughout the United States. I feel like I put a lot of slides together and I didn't want to go too far into land, but I do want to touch on this. So outside city limits, a one acre piece of land, undeveloped, it doesn't have well receptive, it might be partially cleared but not totally cleared, has been selling for an average of fifty thousand an acre in the past eight years I've been doing real estate. I will say that it differs from piece to piece. Obviously, if you have utilities and it's more valuable, if it's cleared, it's more valuable. If it's in a flood area, it's less valuable. So this is just an average. But in 2021, we saw that average go up to a hundred thousand dollars an acre. That is a huge increase. Part of the reason for this is because there were so few land sales in 2020. There's a lot less land available, but also there were just less land sales. So when land became available in 2021, people grabbed at it and they paid a lot of times full price without negotiating because if they waited too long, they'd completely lose out on it. So will this stay the same for 2022? It seems impossible to me that it could, but, but it might. It just depends how much land is available and, you know, as far as building, building costs are high, land costs are high. So what we're seeing is none of this is contributing well to our residential situation. When building is high and land is high, people are making offers on homes that are pre-existing, increasing the buyer pool and the amount of offers going into pre-existing homes, creating more competition and then driving up prices. So if we had more land, more building available, then we would have less people making offers on existing homes and it would slow the rate of growth of values of homes in, in Seward. Possible solutions, these are just thoughts that I've had myself and within my office. These aren't representative of anything else other than just our opinions. But I do believe that it all comes down to a very simple equation. Every single one of these addresses demand and supply, supply and demand, those two things. If you can increase the supply, then you're going to even out the market. And if you can decrease demand, you're going to even out the market. So many ways to make that happen are what are going to help the housing industry in Seward. Personally, I feel like, you know, in our office, we do very much support the city making land available for development. I think that's great. Responsible development, of course. We also support expansion of utilities to make building more affordable, affordable and to happen faster. Because a lot of people own properties in city limits, but maybe they aren't building on it very quickly because there is no utility availability and they know that that's going to be a big cost to them. So they have to save up for that first before they build. And the longer they don't have a home here and they just own land, they're still putting more stress on the rental market because they do come in, they work here and they need rentals. So I think being able to build more quickly will be really helpful and that creates less competition for current inventory. I think also that getting developers, if, if there are going to be large tracts of land available, getting developers who are able to add consistent and quality housing at a rate that can keep up with our demand is really important. Obviously, looking at these numbers, it's pretty clear to me, even ten houses a year isn't going to cut it for what we need to fill, to help out the housing market. City enforcement, just again, my opinion is, and there may or may not be support behind this by the general city, but other cities are putting caps on the total amount of local nightly rentals. So a lot of people can get grandfathered in that are already doing it, but there's just a cap on it. So there's not a continuance of more and more and more nightly rentals to the point where we're just pushing rent, long-term renters out. So I think that's worth considering. Obviously, not allowing nightly rentals in areas not zoned for it to the best of our ability. And potentially incentivizing or enforcing building to happen sooner on lots inside city limits. There are lots that were sold off through different city processes and they're still not built on. And that comes down to a few different things. I think a big part of that is that we don't have enough builders. We need more construction companies. We need more builders. They're maxed out. They're six months to a year out to be able to help people build homes. And, and when we don't have new construction, it's just putting more and more strain on the existing inventory. So I think incentivizing or enforcing building to happen sooner, if that's part of the big process, I think that would be great to see. I also feel that more multiplexes are actually really important. And I'm not talking about low income, low quality housing. We managed, a great example of one is 414 Fifth Avenue, just right by the post office. That building has fourteen units in it, some one bedrooms, some two bedrooms, some three bedrooms. So there's a lot of different sizes, which is great and really helpful for renters. It's well maintained, it's well built. It has a zero percent vacancy rate as well as some of the other rentals that we manage, but that one's probably in, in the best shape. And so I think that's a great example of what we could use. A lot of these people who rent in those situations, they want to be downtown. So I think that walkability and being downtown is actually really nice. It's already more high density housing downtown. I'm not saying that we need to build, you know, six levels of housing, but I just think that really quality construction multiplexes, they get responsible renters. They get good renters. These are the people who are renting and working at a city life center and the hospital and teacher, like these are who the renters are. So I think that allowing people to have this transition of going into a rental before buying a house is, is really great. I think focusing on long-term rental opportunities for your own employees is important. Obviously, there's a seasonal need and a lot of people bring up bunkhouses. I've run the numbers so many different ways. The cost of building right now, you guys will probably talk to contractors. Somebody can tell you one thing, but it's going to be about two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot to build. And that's without the cost of land and utilities a lot of times. And it just doesn't really pencil out to build a brand new bunkhouse, rent it out for the summer at the rates you can, and then have seven months of it being empty, or renting out in the winter because you get lower rates in the winter than you would year round. You actually end up losing, I used an example of a twelve flex in my numbers, and you end up losing at least thirty thousand dollars a, a year. And that's without even maintenance costs. Whereas if you rented those out year round, you're actually making money. So just something to think about. And that's it for me.
Thank you very much. I'll open it up for questions?
Okay, three. I'm just digging into your information. That's all I'm trying to find out.
Yes.
On the very first page, you talked about you have ninety five properties that constitute eighty four percent of year-round rental. You manage them, is what? Okay. Of those ninety five properties, how many would be ones that might be where you manage it year round, but they're only available summer and winter separate leases? Or are they all continuous one?
Those are all continuous.
Okay.
The winter only is that red section. So fifteen properties we manage are only available from September to May.
My second question is, I actually know there's a huge piece of land, but it's locked up and it's locked up by the Siri Corporation. Have you ever done any investigation into that to see if they would ever open it up?
Not independently. I'm not a developer and, and I don't try to solicit people, so I-
Any scuttlebutt?
Any what?
A scuttlebutt?
No, not yet.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, anybody else?
I'm curious, on the last, say, two or three houses that have sold in Seward, how many offers would you say got put? Can you, can you double that or clarify a little bit?
You know, it's winter, so it's been, it's slow in the winter. So I would say winter isn't a great representation of what's happening with offers. But the house that we most recently listed ended up with six offers. And I will say that we have offers coming in, a minimum of five, if it's in the three hundred thousand dollar range, of five offers generally during the summer and up to the highest I've seen, which is sixteen offers on one house.
And so that's, that's happening in five days?
Yes. So Dale Bagley did a presentation, you know, for K-PED, and he said that all the real estate agents really hope it will slow down. And he's not joking. He thinks there's a misconception that this is good for us somehow. But writing that me offers and telling people that they didn't get the house, it's sixteen times more work and you still get paid the same. So it's, it's not good for us and it's not good for buyers. It's really only good for sellers.
Is that it, Paul?
Yep.
I know this is a loaded question and I've asked this question before. How many homes shy of market equilibrium today? Are we not anticipating future growth just today? Wave your magic wand. How many homes do we need on the market to meet current demand?
It's a good question. I asked my coworkers, sales agents to look into their lists of how deep their buyer pool is. And just keep in mind that everybody's looking for something different, right? There are certain people who are just looking for properties on low point from all over the world if they should ever open up. I have a long list of those, but those also privately. So as far as homes and how deep our pool is in our office, I'd say we each have at least twenty sets of buyers on our list. That's probably closer to seventy five total in our office alone. And we're just one of four brokerages. So I mean, we're probably at least seventy five homes under where we need to be right now. And it's probably more than that.
Can I just jump on that for a second? Of those seventy five, how many of those are people who need to be here versus people who just want to come here?
I'd say of those seventy five, I mean, most of those people are people who live in Seward. You know, the majority of those people are who live in Seward. And then the ones who are moving here, it probably is pretty similar to what the graph looks like where, I mean, that might be seventy percent. But the majority of people are, our buyers are, are renters who want to become homeowners. A lot of, a lot of single person households who are going to be first time home buyers, the majority of our buyers.
I think what Linda was getting at, is there, is there a lot of people that are looking for second homes or investment properties as opposed to just wanting to live here of the seventy five?
I think, I think that one graph is pretty much represents all of that. So maybe, yeah, twenty five percent of the people are maybe looking at a second home. But the majority of our buyers are people who, if a house comes on the market, they're here. They're here to look at it and they're here to make an offer.
And I think that's a really important point because when we talk about solving these types of issues, it's important to understand the scope of what we're dealing with. So I guess my takeaway based off of what you just said, that is that when we try to identify solutions for overcoming housing barriers, we need to be thinking in the hundred plus, long-term, in the aggregate. Because by the time those homes are actually built and that demand is being met, your demand now for your office is going to look like a hundred. And to your point, if you're sixty percent of the market, we need to be thinking of a hundred and fifty homes plus.
Yeah. And, and it is in our buyer pool, it will deplete over a summer as we get people into contract. And then it just grows again over the winter. So it's, it's never ending. There's always people looking to purchase.
I have a couple of things to follow up on with the administration said. I looked through the data. I'm not exactly sure how many homes a year sell in Seward. You may have it in there, but I think I'll look over.
So, yep. So how many homes a year sell in Seward? That's on the eleventh slide.
Okay.
And it's forty six in 2021. So you can see that the number dipped down in 2020 to thirty four.
That's a forty four?
Forty six. 46.
And you need 75 more?
Yeah.
Okay. Second question, if I may. This is tremendous work. I really appreciate you bringing it to us. And you clearly are on top of the data. Did you compile this just for us? Number one, okay, sounds like yes. Number two, is this drawn from a variety of sources that you use in the industry?
That's a great question and I love to answer that. I love numbers, so I've worked really hard on this the past week since I knew I would be coming here. But the data comes from, I'm a very data-driven person. I'm not, I don't like to guess at things and I don't make guesses until I know the answer on numbers. So the data for the average days on market, the statistics, the median sales prices, the average sales prices, those are actually coming from Alaska MLS. That's a source that you can only access if you're a real estate licensee or an appraiser. So that's where the majority of data is coming from. So there's no subjective opinion on any of this. And then the Seward Properties data is really the rental information because there is no large rental database to pull that from. And we are the largest property management company in Seward. I would love to sit down with other real estate licensees in town and talk to them about their rental experience as well and see if it really all lines up. Because there is the potential for bias and who hires who, maybe you have different types of clients. But I think the fact that we do so many rentals, it gives us an overall good big picture.
Very cool.
He brought up an interesting fact and you provided some interesting information. And I think there's more to it than just that we need 75 homes, you know, for people to fill in the shortfall. If we had the contractors and we had the buyers, is there land available for 75 additional homes a year?
Right now, as far as what's available for land, no, on the public market, that's not available. I know the city has been talking about opening up different areas of land and I think that would be enormously effective and creating opportunities for development. But I do want to point out too, when we did talk about how many houses we need available, I'm talking units and not necessarily single-family homes. So when we say we need 75, I'm also saying we need homes, of course. That affects our, our sales market, but we really need rentals.
Housing units, like you referred to over here by holdup. You may educate me a little bit. I know a little bit about mortgages. I, you sort of indicated that there was an increase in mortgages. And it used to be 25% when I was a kid, that probably to wages was 25%. So that's grown a little bit. But as that number is relative to the housing costs and you said that mortgages were increasing, I assume you meant mortgages for home sales. Because if I own a home with a mortgage, I can either have a fixed or a floating rate, but my mortgage doesn't automatically go up.
Yeah, you're very, you're correct, Chris. Yeah. I mean, for people purchasing homes, the mortgages that they'll be taking on, yeah. Yours didn't change, thankfully.
Unless you have a-
Well, I refinanced, I refinanced, yeah.
Okay. To me, all right, so I have some questions. How many, are any of your properties, properties that kick people out for the summertime and then re-rent in the fall?
Yep, they are. And that is on page three, the third slide, and that's the red pie section. So 15 properties.
Okay, okay, that's, that's what that is. And so when you, so these numbers are really just for your office?
For rental stuff, yeah, there's no, there's no database to pull that from.
Right, right, okay. All right, now, can I, under what can a renter afford? Have we done a correlation to local salaries?
I mean, I have not independently done that.
Has the city done a correlation to local salaries? I would identify that as something that needs to happen, right? I mean, it's lovely. We know how much everything costs now in terms of housing and rentals, but how many people are really here that could pay these numbers is a good question, I think. This rental sales price in Seward slide is a 2021, that's shopping. That $400,000, all of a sudden, 34% is-
Which one, which slide? Number eight here?
The pie chart?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Then we went from 2019 with basically nothing in the $400,000 or above, and all of a sudden now we're at 34, 35%?
Yes.
That's, that's-
It is, and I do want to point out that some of the people who were purchasing in that price range, one of the things that happened is they were sellers in other states in the past year during this COVID, you know, house craziness. And so they made a lot of money on the sale of a home. So a lot of those buyers came to Seward with this excess money to be able to pay more for a house. So that did happen in the past year.
Did you happen to see on Facebook the video, the YouTube video from 1977?
No, no.
It was a video where they interviewed a bunch of people in Seward and you can go find it on the forum. It's out there. What's interesting about it is, this was 1977. And basically, they talked about the population being 1,000 people to 2,000 people. And, and the movie, or the, you know, the video was all about the oil boom, which actually never did come to Seward. But everything that got said are the same things that are being said today. And I lost sleep over it because it's like, okay, what are we doing, folks? I mean, if we're talking about this in 1977 and we're still talking about it in 2022, we have to figure this out. And I don't know, but I wonder if a study should be done that, that really gathers the data from the employers in the town so that we can figure out what the salary is that's reasonable to expect people to be able to buy or rent. And I think we need to look at revisiting perhaps building codes and increasing, you know, numbers of floors in building. I, I don't know. But this has got to be the last year where we just spin our wheels. We just can't, I mean, that's 50 years, basically.
Wait, order. Is there a question for the presenter?
Well, she has her suggestions here. I think at this point, though, it's worthy to have a discussion about what does the board think? What, what do we think about how we, where do we go from here? Does admin have any ideas? I see you're nodding.
I, I can just point out to you that the city acknowledges and understands that this is a primary barrier to growth in our community. Anybody who's been paying attention to city council meetings up late will probably take note of the fact that we have a number of projects that are moving forward. Right now, at the next city council meeting, we have two resolutions to move forward with the Hemlock subdivision, which is a proposal for 40 single-family homes. That's one project. In the spring, subject to snow conditions, we're going to be doing some preliminary geotechnical work on this SMIC bench. That has the potential to be a more than 100-family home development. So the city is in a position to take action on some items and we're taking action on what we can do. I think as far as income, I see the correlation you're going at. I don't know that the city is in a position directly to do anything in that regard. We're best positioned to encourage development, to look at the best use of municipal lands. That's something the community development director's working on, is revisiting municipal land plan and identifying what projects we're in a position to work on. But I can tell you that it's definitely something that we're devoting time and energy towards solving the housing crisis in our community.
What about rentals? So you've identified a couple of things, but both of those were for single-family homes. What about what Nicole is talking about in terms of needing good rentals additionally?
You know, I think our view at this point in time is that a rising tide floats all ships. And so anything that we can do to expand utilities and get more inventory on the market is probably the best thing that we as a municipal organization can do. Folks, you know, folks inside of Seward, one of my takeaways from Nicole's presentation, which was amazing, by the way, was that there's a lot of Seward residents that are purchasing a second home, which I guess my thought would be that that then becomes a rental. So the best thing the city can do, in our view, is to get utilities to, for example, portions of forest acres where folks have been buying lots, but water, sewer, and roads don't exist. So that's definitely an action item and looking at what we can do to encourage more development.
What I would say with the SMIC bench, you know, if the zoning's right, if we get developers that come in, they're, they're going to, they're going to provide the rental units, the fourplexes, the 12plexes, the 16plexes, you know. It's maybe a little more difficult up Hemlock, I don't know. I think that's all R1 up there or R2 or something, but we'll be with R1. So it's, you know, they're going to, they're going to be single-family homes. But I think that if we can do something across the bay or there's a, there's a layout somewhere of all the borough land that we could try and get, a lot of it's undevelopable, undevelopable. But if we can get a developer that wants to come in and help solve this solution, I think that's a key for others, the city or PACAB, trying to bring it to council to try and find somebody, you know. Bruce talked about Spinell Homes in Anchorage last time we were here. So there's people out there. Got to find the land.
So, something Stephen also said, so at the next council meeting, they're doing a developer incentive program, reimbursement program. It's the first initial for introduction. That's things helping get all the stuff put in place, you know, the utilities get it. And then they can, builders can go out and then they can start building. It's all depending what the builder wants to build. I mean, the city can't direct a builder, what are you, you know, what are you supposed to build? I mean, that's up to the builder on whatever lot he's going to get. And I know that the city's trying to get land out to go, put cul-de-sacs in and get other things done. It's just getting the infrastructure in place first and I think it'll take off.
The question that I really have is, how do we manage this moving forward so that what we are doing is providing housing to people that need to be here, right? The people that are working at the sea life center or at the hospital or at the schools. These are all places where we are hearing that they can't get employees to come because there's nowhere for them. The mayor said to me the other day, we're never going to have enough housing for everybody that wants to come here. And that's true. And I don't think that it's appropriate necessarily to try and fill the need for everyone that wants to come here, but we need to fill the need for the people who have to be here. And I don't know how you, you manage that.
I, I don't know either. I would say nobody knows where it would have been sold 50 years ago. But I will say that, you know, it might not be a popular opinion, but when I say that we need more multiplexes, I'm also saying that I personally believe that more zoning for multifamily is what allows multiplexes to happen. Buyers like it because they could buy it, live in half, rent out the other. But that's also why I mentioned maybe putting a cap on nightly rentals. Because I believe if nightly lodging is allowed, if you have a duplex or a fourplex, what I wouldn't want to see is someone building a fourplex, living in one part of it and then doing nightlies on the other three. I understand that people need to cover their mortgage costs, but I'm just saying that I think that putting a cap on nightly rentals might work well with the ability for people to do multifamily housing. And then they would be creating long-term rental scenarios for people, which we really do need more rentals. It's, single-family homes, yes, but we, at the same time, we need more rentals.
I, I'm sure the chair will. I'd like to thank Nicole for coming in. The solution is something that we're going to try to find after we've held a number of other presenters that are going to offer things as simple as rentals for construction workers don't exist. So you're not going to be building houses if you don't have a place for such a construction workers without them coming with a camp, which swells the price on and on up. That's really not what I think Nicole can focus on. But I, I certainly have learned a lot from your presentation. And I think that this is not a unique problem in Seward. We have the benefit of having a growing economy that other places don't have.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to present to you guys. If you have further questions, I am at my office and available.
Before you walk out, I want to thank you very much for the concise, accurate, and powerful-
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nicole. That was a great, great slide presentation, too, really.
Great, well, thank you guys so much and good luck with our, with your meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, we want to discuss this anymore? I, I'd just like to ask the board if the thought of a study is something that's reasonable to consider.
You're putting it out for discussion? I, I think you're in the middle of it. I think you're inviting a number of people in there and I think until you get the response from a variety of people, in my opinion, you've only got two presenters so far. There's a lot more to talk to.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I just wonder if, if that might be a possible solution. Okay, we can move on. Okay, so the next thing, we're onto new business. Resolution 2022-003, have a copy of it in your packet.
Resolution 2022-003 is authorizing the use of telephonic attendance for PACAB meetings within stated guidelines.
Motion in a second to discuss.
I'll move to approve.
One second.
Let's speak on a motion.
Yep.
I'm not sure I'm in favor of this. I think, I, I was in three Zoom or team meetings this morning before I came to this meeting. I, I'm not sure that a telephonic presentation has the same weight as that kind of presentation. So just dialing in, I think there's an expression about that. I'm not entirely sure that it's going to gain what we want. I do understand absentee participation, wanting to participate from afar. I make the drive down here deliberately to participate in this in person. I expose myself to all your COVID down here. But it's worth it and it's a value and not just to me. So without, without a deeper participation than just a telephonic talk, I'm not entirely sure that I would support this. I'd like to hear the rationale for why, with board.
Can I speak to his concern? So I didn't include Zoom. I mean, ideally, I think it would be Zoom, but that has a budgetary impact and I wasn't prepared to impact the budget with the resolution.
Yeah, well, I understand whenever we get, not we get, JAFAS concerns, but at the same token, there are some of us that do have to travel for a couple of months and want to participate. And one of the problems that involves when there isn't a quorum because of that situation, things don't get done. And telephonically allows a quorum and participation in the meeting to help accomplish the goals of PACAB. Now, I, I think it's, it's a good idea because we do have members that have to travel, part of their work, their job. And it allows them to participate. They can take an hour or two out of their day and participate telephonically to be part of the member. That's, that's my justification for it.
Okay. I understand both perspectives, I think, or all three of your perspectives. I think that, we appreciate you driving down here, Marissa.
It's beautiful, beautiful ground.
I think that, I guess for me, I'd be interested to see what the budgetary, budgetary constraints would be on doing Zoom. I can't imagine that it would cost the board that much more to hook a computer up to get some Zoom meetings going. I would prefer much more-
I would prefer much more to be able to participate via Zoom as opposed to telephonically, but I too am like Carl, I leave sometimes in the winter, and I would like to participate in the meetings. I don't feel like I would like to call in and listen on the phone and not be able to have a voice in those meetings. So if it's only telephonically, I think that's, I'd be a favor of it, but I'd be much more favored of it if we could do a Zoom or Google meets or whatever. And so I don't know if administration can explain what it might cost us to do that or if the clerk knows, if there's.
No, I don't have a financial statement because it wasn't part of the resolution, so sorry.
That's okay.
So I take it we would like to get the financial information before we move forward? Would you say or a nay on this?
That would be my preference. I would like to see what, if it's, you know, if it's a huge cost, then maybe it's not worth it, but if it's a small cost to be able to do it via Zoom or something like that, I would prefer.
To my knowledge, we've only had one lack of quorum in the last session. And we're one member short. In the past, where we had a full board, we were generally able to have a quorum at every meeting of the year for as long as I can remember. That said, when the board members who have a strong contribution to make can't make it because they have business commitments or others, yeah, that's, that's not helpful either.
Or they're sick.
Or, well, for whatever reason, they can't attend in person, it would be, it would be beneficial for the board to be able to continue work, but I don't think a telephone call makes it. That's my opinion. I've listened to the lawyer on the telephone compared to when the lawyer is here for council meeting, and it's not the same at all. Not the same at all.
Norm?
Yeah, so I think that we should, if council decides to go to telephonic because of COVID, then we follow council rules. If council's not doing it, we stay the way we are, like council, if we need to be here. That's what I think we should be here, and everybody should be here, but if COVID takes over again, we have to go to Zoom meetings, and that's what council decides to do. I just don't think, I think this board needs to be here, to be in the room. That's my opinion.
So Paul for the vote?
Yes.
Did you have something more, Stephen?
I did have a question. So section one of the resolution indicates that the intent is to approve a resolution to amend the council, city council rules and procedures. Council rules and procedures are a reiteration of city code, and so I guess the question I have is, is the intent to change city code 2.30320 meetings and quorum for PACAB, or is the intent simply to change the rules and procedures document?
Okay, not 100% of the council rules and procedure is a direct reflection of code. There is additional information inside the code, the city council rules and procedure that is not, it's more detailed and not included in code, so there is a disparity. And in particular, the board and commission, each one has a page in the council rules. I think that was the intent, to maybe change that page with this, as I understood your, the conversation, and not to go back to code with this. Because there isn't that level of specificity in code.
Should we call it off? Or what do we do?
If your debate is done? No further debate?
I got one more thing. I'm a no vote on this, and I've heard that there's good reason to have absentee participation, and I do like that idea, but, well, the fact that the city council will have to review this, and I doubt if they're going to pass it, frankly, and particularly in light of the fact that it would require a code change. I just think there's too many things out there, so I'm a no vote.
Okay, voting on the approval of resolution 2022-003. Jaffa?
No.
Hughes?
Yes.
Yes.
Pacet?
No.
Okay, that resolution has failed.
It wouldn't have passed even if I voted yes, would it? Don't you have to have?
Boards and commissions, the majority vote takes the, a vote of three?
Would have passed.
Would, would carry.
Yeah, we're not ready to do that. I would like, if there's a way for administration to get us an estimate on what it would cost if we made it Zoom instead of just telephonically? I am curious.
Yeah, I think Dustin.
We'll get with IT and get that, get those numbers in. Brenda can get that sent out to you.
And Norm, I appreciate your feedback about how if council goes to Zoom, then we will go to Zoom. The problem is, is that there's just, you know, there's just not the time, right? They'd have to have the, we'd have a meeting, they wouldn't have made the decision, and you know, then we'd have to go on, wait for them. I was just trying to get something that would just ease it up, because we take this hiatus in the summer, and I really feel like we've missed a fair amount of work this fall. Okay, so we're on to informational items and reports. Let's see if we have anything. Next up is citizen comments. No citizen comments?
Yeah, there is.
Oh, okay.
I'll step away from the daze for a minute.
Now we don't have a quorum.
Well.
So go to recess.
Okay, or suspend the rule?
No recess.
Recession, all right, there's no recess.
Oh, did I screw everything up?
11:16. Okay. Okay, we are back on.
Okay. Citizen comments, so no citizen comments? Do we go on to board and administration comments? One of you go first.
Okay, I really appreciate the discussion we had today, the presenter that we had brought in excellent, excellent information, and some people are very lucky to be able to participate with that person. I think she's a great treasure trip and benefit to the city of Seward. With that said, I think it's a long haul. We're going to try to make it short, but since Steve brought this to the board, you know, there's been a lot of background stuff, but bringing a variety of people to play, including the builders, Larry Harmon has indicated that he's interested, would be available for a discussion, but there are others, and that's a big key to this. The solution, and I've heard this from a number of people, the solution is going to be a private sector solution. Unless the city wants to get into the housing business, this solution is going to be from people who want to make money. And frankly, there's lots of places for investors to spend their money today. Almost every city in Alaska is screaming for building, and the problem in many cases is the lack of carpenters, plumbers, electricians, and those things. So it's a big issue, and this is why I think when we were talking about bringing in the abtech people and the school people, this is all education to build our workforce. So that's one whole side of my comments. I think we're on the right track, frankly. I think that having the presenters of the quality that we're getting is going to give us something that we can give the city. How we move forward, council is going to have to obviously work with the administration on removing or deep, what's the word, de, moving, removing blocks, roadblocks, de-roadblocking the way forward. And if that's planning zoning changes or stricter enforcement, you know, I think that's for another day, another discussion. That's point one. Point two, in our priorities list, we have clearly an item that says, explore, promote energy alternatives and community sustainability practices. The PACAB pushed strongly for interconnect policy with the electrical department. PACAB needs to push as strongly for the heat pump system. And I think, I am going to explore and try to advocate a public-private advocacy group. I don't know exactly where the rules run in this, but something that, the city's got a lot on their plate, you know, between electrical build-outs and utility build-outs and land things, this may not be the hottest ticket. I'm not saying they don't or can't, just say that it may be an alternative way to help. So I am going to try to bring a resolution to PACAB in the near term to get them to promote this, an advocacy group similar to what we had when they did the airport advisory group. Other than that, another great trip to Seward today and a great meeting. Thank you.
I don't have anything.
Yeah, first off, again, Bruce is correct, former job is correct, that Nicole gave us a lot of information, a lot of information. I'm just, I have a question sort of sitting in my mind I have to ask. What the hell happened to all the carpenters? When I first came to Seward, I built 12 houses, four multi-units, including the Glacier Dew Senior Center, and there were carpenters everywhere, you know, and now we have a shortage, you know, that we don't even have, we've lost contractors themselves because they can't get people. That in itself is simply amazing to me. It's an excellent profession for young men to go into and get paid good money. So other than that, yeah, we have a lot we have to solve, and I definitely am in very much favor continuing to push for heat pumps. That program is very important. It would be lovely to have a system that the businesses downtown could tie into with the home, and once you get a couple of them tying into it and they can start touting the benefits of it, you can have a lot more business tying into it. That's, that's it.
Thank you, Carl. Yes, thank you to Nicole, it was an excellent, excellent presentation, very informative. Heat pumps, we were trying to put a heat pump in, only the building doesn't have two tanks, and so that's the big stumbling block. I'm curious too, and I'm sure, I know we're going to have Abtech come and speak to us, but I can't help but wonder if some kind of a partnership between the building trades at Abtech and the city, or some way to be feeding the carpenters and plumbers, et cetera, into the various carpentry, the building contractors that we have, you know, some way of boosting that program so it's being more productive for Seward. I don't know, but that is a problem, right? I mean, it's great, we can have all the land we want, but if we can't find the people with the hands and the nails, we still got a problem. So I think that's it. We have our, the calendar is in here, we have our work session mid-month, so we'll see you all then. Admin's going to work on giving us a price so we can maybe redo this resolution and bring it back at the next holding meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
What day of the, date is our work session on?
It's February 16th.
I won't be able to attend because I'll be in Anchorage getting fed for some ice surgery.
Oh, okay.
Just a small, but.
A little bit, or what?
Yep.
Okay, thanks for letting us know. Hopefully, we'll have a quorum. And we did get an application, Fred Wolf was put in, so that'll come before council at the next meeting on the floor speech. Oh, Norm, sorry.
I would like to also thank Nicole for a great presentation, it was great. Also looking forward for our project, they're going to get started here, hopefully mid-month they should start going, you'll start seeing something happening in the harbor besides just ice. So hopefully that gets going. And there was a question that came up earlier, and I was just going to touch on it about the height limit. As soon as you have a building on this side of the bay that can hold the ladder truck, the height limit can go up. The ladder truck's going to be on this side of the bay. Until it gets over here, then the height limit will go up. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Yeah, but then, yeah, right, yeah. That, okay, anything else? We'll adjourn after 25 after 1:00.
Stephen, I have a question.
Adjourn 1:25.